Thank you.
Vinny, you there?
Yes, sir.
I have you on speaker.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Vinny.
Hi, Vin.
Roll call.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fium.
Here.
Ms. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcella.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
We have one announcement of executive session held as followed, March 28th, 2017. The reason is personnel. We also have two public announcements and recognitions tonight. The first one is for the Hazelton area school district trap and skeet club. Mr. Gans. Do you want to go to the podium so everyone could hear you?
Thank you again, I'm Joe Gans. I'm the head coach for the Hazelton area trap and skeet club. And again, thank you so much for your generous support for our, for our organization. We're here tonight, we have several officers and several club members, as well as three, two of the coaches. We do have some presentations to make, we have some hats if they would like to pass them out, and a book. We wrote a book which describes the years since 2002 that we've had with the, with your approval, with board approval to conduct training for trap and skeet and sporting class in the Hazelton area school district. If you would like to take a look at that and pass it around, if you'd like to present it to Mr. Patron, the principal of the high school. We keep it in the library. It's a chronological order in history of the entire shooting club, dating back from 2002. Do you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
And the reason, Mr. Gans, we're recognizing your club tonight is because you had an undefeated season, correct?
We had a very successful season. They're the national, they are the national trap champions, not only in a high school division, but in open, into the varsity division. They're the best of the best in the United States. They've done that not by, by mere feat of excellence, by achieving a perfect round, which means all five competitors shot a perfect score to break a tie with a national championship. That's unheard of, that is very, very unheard of, very complimentary. There are two of the members right there at the end, Thomas Vachelli, if you would stand, and John T. Savoish.
Thank you, we're very proud of your club, and thank you for representing the school district in such a great fashion.
Thank you, thank you very much for your support.
Our second recognition tonight will be for the junior academy of science, Mr. Genotti.
Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazelton area school district and its board of education, I have the privilege of introducing and recognizing a group of Valley Middle School students for their academic accomplishments. The following students competed at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, which was held at Wilkes University on Saturday, March 4th, 2017. As I announce your name, if you would please come forward. Following students that received a first place award will continue and compete at the state competition that will be held May 2017 at the Pennsylvania State University. Those students are Ms. Jenna Kubitz. Ms. Kayla Marnisowski. Ms. Emily Kane. Ms. Isabel Ritz. Ms. Isabel Sarach. Ms. Vera Skunth. Ms. Jenna Wederoff. Ms. Molly Zanachko. And Mr. Nathaniel Bacon. Students that received a second place award are Ms. Sarah Balai. Ms. Maddie Wool. And Mr. Tommy Paul. Receiving a third place award was Ms. Jonna Rudden. In addition to the individual awards, the Valley Middle School received the large school award for the highest percentage of first place awards received by a school. Ladies and gentlemen, the Valley Middle School Pennsylvania Junior, the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science students. Take a moment to recognize the individuals that work with the students and prepare them for the competition that they were involved in. And they are the co-advisors for this club. They are Ms. Amy Fetterman and Mr. John Weaver, if you would stand.
Okay. Mr. O'Donnell, a public comment on agenda items only.
Dr. Childs? Yeah, he skipped over.
Oh yeah, before we start, we're going to remove number 64 and 65.
Name is again. I'm Bob Childs, I'm a resident of Hazel Township. I'm standing here to speak on number one. I don't know any of the three individuals involved here, but the individual number B. The Western Governors University is an online school, it's a for-profit school. Okay, that means if somebody is charging students a good deal of money, they pay the teachers, and then that, that money does not go to scholarships, and it does not go to, to some sort of a fund for the college. It doesn't go to a building program, it goes in somebody's pocket. Okay, so how much are you guys getting paid for teaching all these students? Squat, nothing. My comment, I think something needs to be done about that whole situation. I can't, I can't fathom how a school district that's in financial trouble can do all this teaching and get nothing for it. The other one that I wanted to, just to briefly touch on, is item number 30. I hope that there will be some kind of a replacement for that that makes some sort of sense. We need to have some sort of regulations on, on bidding processes. We, when I first got on the board, when we first got on the board, Marie, there were no restrictions, there was, there were splitting up of contracts, there was all kinds of stuff going on, and that doesn't need, we don't need to go back to that. So, just a comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
That's all.
That all, okay. Approve items 1 to 15 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
Numbers 1 to 15, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Oh yeah, sorry, sorry, got ahead of myself. We need to approve the board meeting minutes from the regular monthly board meeting and the treasurer's report.
So moved again.
Questions?
All in favor of approving the minutes and the treasurer's report, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Prove items 16 through 18 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
Number 16, 18, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Prove items 20 to 27 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
Marie, what about 19?
Number 19.
Is that just not included?
Well, we, we already made the motion, we can go back, I guess.
Oh, sorry.
Want to vote on 20 to 27?
Yeah, let's do 20 to 20. 20 to 27.
20 to 27, sorry.
So moved.
We did that already.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, so sorry.
Wasn't your fault.
Numbers 20 to 27, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Let's go back to number 19.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments?
What is the cost of this?
It is 500 hours at a cost of...
$90,000.
Yeah, $87.5, I believe, if we are specific.
Mr. Mahalik comes out of access funds?
Yeah, this will be coming out of early...
The general budget.
Right, early intervention and school-based access funds only.
Okay.
So it's of no cost to the district then?
No cost of the general fund to the district, that is correct.
And the purpose of this, Mr. Mahalik?
Professional development for all of our special education teachers, and also however, Ms. Shinuzi sees fit to use it, could also be used for regular education teachers, administrators. It's really what she believes, you know, her main priorities are, you know, right out of the gate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, this goes into what we had discussed at prior meetings, having someone to review IEPs, help write IEPs, educate, you know, people writing the IEPs and so forth, right?
Yeah, that is correct. This is, I think, a very good first step, Mr. Zola, in that process. And I'm definitely appreciative of Ms. Shinuzi for her efforts in trying to combat, you know, some of the challenges that we see that we're faced with from a, not only a litigation standpoint, but also in maybe not exactly delivering the best programming to our students.
So, Mr. Mahalik, rather than hire an IEP writer, we're going to go this avenue?
I think down the road, and Ms. Shinuzi and I haven't spoken about that, I think down the road, looking at a facilitator might be a great idea, Mr. Benomo. However, I think because we're looking at real intensive training out of the, out of the gate, having someone with the knowledge, experience, you know, as the attorney that's representing us in situations when we, when we need them, might be a good first start. And I think down the road, and again, Ms. Shinuzi and our committee has not even discussed maybe a facilitator, but I think that might be a very, very good avenue as well. But I think the first step is having, you know, all of our special ed teachers go through a real intensive IEP training. And to, you know, maybe piggyback a little bit off Mr., or Dr. Childs' statement about those student teachers, we have some teachers in this room, some special education teachers too. You know, you really do not get prepared to write an IEP in college, and that's no fault to the, to the colleges, but you just don't have the opportunity. There's a lot that goes into writing an IEP, there's a lot of responsibility, no student teacher is going to be given that opportunity. The, the training is really on-the-job training, and unfortunately, you basically just jump in, and you could go years and years and years without really knowing how to write the best plan and how to implement the best plan. And you get into habits. I know I got into some, some poor habits, not because I didn't have great, you know, administrators, but I just, it never came to light that what I was maybe doing wasn't the best practice. And then when it does come to light, you say, whoa, but a district of this size, there's no way that one acting director and three supervisors can oversee 1,350 IEPs at a minimum, so...
Is the plan to do this like on the act 80 days, or?
No, the plan's going to be all, it's going to be all year. This will not be an act day, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of scheduling, and I know Deb...
So then it's going to cost more than $95,000 because...
The contract is for a flat amount of $90,000 for 500 hours, and then $175 an hour, which is her contractual fee.
But again, if, if we're taking them out of the classroom during the year, you're going to have to pay for the substitute.
Absolutely.
That money come out of that?
That can all come out of access, substitutes for training can absolutely...
They don't put any limits on how much you can take out of there?
No, in fact, again, and I'll bring up because it will irk me until the day I leave this earth, the state came in and took 1.5 million dollars of early intervention access funds off the Hazelton area school district because we had been too frugal with our money, we had been too responsible, and when they did, they came in and took that money from us. So, first of all, this is something we need, second of all, we're never going to give the opportunity for someone to come take our hard-earned dollars that we've saved by providing these services to our students. But yes, you can use access funds to cover the cost of substitutes for professional development days.
Will any of this training be done in the summer, Bob?
Well, and again, yes, I mean, that is a possibility, again, Ms. Shinuzi, I'm going to leave that to you, obviously, this is your, you know, you know the scheduling, you know, I know our teachers. Yeah, I mean, it's available for the summer. If we can coordinate it with our teachers, I know, speaking with Angela Evans, she will do this in the summer, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can you just ask her, because this bothers me, because I probably am a little too anal with this stuff, but $175 times 500 hours is 87.5.
It is, and that's what it is. It is definitely 87.5, by the way, and I don't think that's, you know, that's being responsible, so I don't know where that number, that other number came from, but that's what it is, yes, okay.
I do get it, for not paying for it, but I don't, it just, that just bothers me, okay.
Approve items 28 and 29 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
You know, I'm sorry. Do we vote on number 19? For some reason we don't. Because I talk too much.
Okay, on number 19, I might be having a mini-stroke.
Number 19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Okay, now items 28 and 29.
I think there is a motion in a second. Motion in a second, yep.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 28, 29, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Approve items 30 to 32 with one motion. Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 30 to 32, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Prove items 33 to 36 with one motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 33 to 36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Number 37, bills?
So moved.
Second, on the question. On letter A, is that, Tony, is that all for the special ed stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
So now that we switch over to that agreement, these bills won't be coming through.
Any other questions? Roll call.
37, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Okay, continuing on, superintendent's agenda, approve items 38 through 40.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 38 to 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No on 38. Ice have it, motion passes.
Prove items 41 through 53 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 41 to 53, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
And approve items 54 through 66, excluding 64 and 65 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
On question 64 and 65, 64 is the job description?
Yes.
And 65 is deployment?
Yes.
And they're all being grouped?
We're removing them.
Removing, okay.
Roll call.
Numbers 54, 54 to 66. Excluding 64 and 65, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
And Ms. Kay, may I just take a moment, if there are any audience members this evening who were recently appointed to a position, if you would stand so we could recognize you at this point? Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Just, yeah, two quick things, Mr. President. One, our retirees, just want to wish them a lot of health and, and a wonderful, and a wonderful golden years, as they call it, and also thank them so very much for what they have provided to our district and to our students. So thank you, and secondly, if I may, brought this up the other evening, the committee meeting, I know a lot of people weren't able to be in attendance, so I'd like to bring it up again, discussing the article, well, actually, there was another article in the standard speaker, thank you, Mr. Jackson, for covering it, regarding the, the possible realignment of certain districts. One being the removal of several communities in the Hazelton area school district to join another school district. What I would, would ask is if our business manager could, for the next board meeting, give us an in-depth review of what that would mean, top to bottom. What kind of funding we would be looking at losing through our taxes, what type of impact it would have on our budget with the loss of the positions, the building, what we would look at doing with the building, excuse me, would we sell the building? Would we, would we lease the building, whatever, I just would like a full, and also, if you could give us some understanding, I try to read Pennsylvania's school code of what it takes for a community to break off. It seems a little more complicating than what was presented in the one article, so I'd just like if we could have a complete review of what that community, what the communities would need to do, what it involves. I just would like our, our community to be completely informed and educated on what the process is, and if it's, you know, if it's what they feel is best, then, you know, certainly I would respect that, especially being that I represent not only the whole board, but especially the area that I live in. So I would just like a full analysis of what this means for those communities.
Sure. When would you like it, at the April board meeting?
I was hoping the April, if possible.
In the meantime, Mr. Mahalik, I would like to ask Dr. Butler and Mr. Reebok question. If this comes to fruition, those students will lose the advantage of using our Career Center, our Academy of Science, and the Arts of Humanities. And the reason I'm saying this, I have a granddaughter who's in the high school in ninth grade, and I don't think she'll go to Burwick. Does that mean if she stays here, we have to pay tuition? If somebody wants to stay here and go to the academy out of that area, do they have to pay tuition to our district? Same thing with the Career Center. I would like to know those answers to Bobby's question. If we can't get them tonight, I would like them to have them when they present their report.
And Mr. John, may I just, since you raised that point, I've been sharing with every media person that's spoken to me, and I say this with great pride, how powerful and how fortunate this district is to have not, not only good schools across the board, but those four quality high school programs. You can walk away from this district, but you're giving up a lot because there are very few districts in the state that can offer their high school students four quality programs like that. And I'm, I'm darn proud of the fact that we have it, and it's going to be tough to, as you said, I can't imagine some of our families walking away from that.
I can't either.
Any other board member?
I just had one thing, one that's not related, but I was going to bring this up at the... Are you finished, Mr. Mahalik?
I am, I have one other topic, but please, go ahead, not related to that.
Do it before you have a chance.
Okay, then I'll just finish by stating that on April 4th, help me out, Mrs. President, April 4th at 7:00, 7:00 PM, there is going to be a meeting open to the public. Correct? Am I correct? Oh, okay. Well then, let's inform the public anyway, so there is a meeting on April 4th that is going to discuss kindergarten. We're going to discuss the school year, now that we have one year in, or almost one year, unless you went to AM, then you have about a half a year, but nonetheless, you have a group of administrators and a board that is going to discuss in an executive session, is that correct?
We're just going to get, Dr. Butler is kind enough, along with Mr. Genotti and yourself, who added that many, to get some information for the rest of the board, so it really is just an informational session to gather the facts, and then we will bring it to the public.
So again, it's the boards again, attempt at being proactive instead of reactive, just as with the junior high committee.
We do have a public budget meeting coming up on March 30th, that's this week, it's a Thursday night, at what time, 6:00?
6:00 or 7:00, Bobby. I believe it is at 7:00. I believe it's at 7:00. I'll check the website while you're talking.
Okay, are you done now?
Yes, thank you.
I was just going to bring up at the committee meetings last week, but they were very quick in that, I think I spoke to you once about this, I didn't know how the board felt, but maybe being a little bit proactive, and I know we're, you know, depending on what happens with the other schools and that, can we just form a committee to look down the road? You know, we're obviously going to run out of space, we need, I understand we need some space for storage, you know, for students and that, maybe a committee just to look at buildings that are around the area or sites, or if we could eventually expand maybe some of our schools like the Valley or... the area or sites, or if we could eventually expand maybe some of our schools, like the Valley, or Drums, or others, to add on to maybe move ninth grade down the road, this is nothing etched in stone, but just a committee to look, to be a little progressive or proactive, uh, you know, I know it's tough with, you know, finances, but at some point, we may need to do that, so it doesn't hurt to start, and that's, uh, that's all I was asking, if a committee could be formed to do that.
Sure, would you like to head that committee?
Sure, I, I guess, sure.
You are now, man, you got it, you wanted, you got it.
There you go.
Okay.
Mr. Fuma, are you referring to kind of developing a facility mast, facilities master plan over the next five to ten years?
The proper, uh, title for that would be-
Careful what you ask, or you'll get it.
Facilities, man, right, yeah, thanks. Right, you got it. Thanks, thank you, that's all.
Any other board member?
I, I think other, my other board members may be interested or, uh, feel the same, if anybody does remember.
Bobby, I'd like to serve on, how about you?
Oh, sure, ready? Okay.
Anyone else? Now we'll open it to public comment on non-agenda items.
Can you say agenda items, Bobby?
Non-agenda items.
I have a couple of questions.
Not you, Antonio. Okay, last him then.
My name is Antonio Rodriguez, am, am I talking too low here? Uh, my name is Antonio, and I live in, uh, I live in Hazelton. Uh, a couple of questions, what's this about, uh, getting out of the district, a couple of municipalities trying to get out of Hazelton Area School District?
Yeah, there was a report, uh, sir, in the, uh, press enterprise, uh, of a group of, uh, citizens from the Hazelton Area that are exploring options, uh, of joining another school district, and that's what I was referencing, and just wanting to see if we can get as much information as possible, uh, because there have been ongoing, uh, conversations, uh, with the school district and this group, and, you know, I wanna be very respectful of the desires and, and wishes of that group, um, so I wanna be able to know as much as I, I need to know.
Did they express, uh, legal, uh, valid legal reason for trying to get out?
Uh, I don't know that there was a legal reason, I think, you know, they might be, uh, a, a little unhappy with some, I mean, you know, the truth is that we've had to, uh, deal with some, some, you know, serious fiscal challenges here in Hazelton Area, and we saw, again, the cutting of, uh, full-day kindergarten last year, uh, you know, some other little hiccups that we, we dealt with, and, and I think we've, we've, uh, ironed out, and I think we're running very effectively now, but I think they led to that as a reason for wanting to explore other options.
And how long will it take for them to, to join Berwick?
Well, I, I mean, that, that's, you know, it is a long process, it, it definitely is, I know there's one other school district right now that's been, uh, in the state, the southern part of the state, that they've been doing this for about four years now, and they're still waiting for PDE to rule on it, so-
Do they need a petition with signatures?
Yes.
To, to my knowledge, yes, they need fifty percent of the communities that would be affected, and, and Mr. Jackson, if you know more, please speak up, but I, I, my, uh, exploration of this, that they would need fifty percent, uh, signatures of the residents in those areas that are affected.
Fifty percent of-
Fifty percent.
Adult people over twenty-one, right?
I think it's eighteen, if I'm not mistaken. I think it was, yeah, over eighteen.
And, uh, people with children in the dist-
I think it has to be fifty percent of the taxpayers of the municipalities where they want to move from, um, and then they will petition the court.
And they need to be parents?
No, they need to be, they need to be residents.
How can they collect a signature for somebody who's not paid any taxes and has no children?
Well, you could pay taxes and not have children.
And their children may be grown.
Education, why, why, why could they get that type of signature?
Well, what's the question, Antonio, I'm sorry?
I'm saying this, if they begin collecting signature for petition, why should they collect, uh, the, the name of a person who has nothing to do with the school district, in, in, in Hazelton or Berwick?
If you're a resident of that area, Antonio.
If you're a resident, you still have a say, I mean, just because you don't have children doesn't mean you don't pay the taxes, doesn't mean that you don't have a say.
Yep.
Fire. This is gonna take a few years, right?
Uh, again, and, and, and I'm sure Mr. Jackson has really looked into this, I've tried in my, my little bit of time, yeah, it's, it's a, a few-year process.
Okay, my other concern was something I saw in the Sunday newspaper about people who are not, uh, from Hazelton, people who don't, do not live in, within the Hazelton Area School District jurisdiction, and, uh, and they have children in, in Hazelton schools, people from New York and even from out of the country, and, uh, we don't even know who they are, and their children are attending Hazelton, uh, schools, who, why, why is that happening?
Well, because there is a form in the state code that allows them to give guardianship at no cost to someone that lives in this district, so we are working with our elected officials to help us tighten that up a little bit, to try to get control over who's actually coming into the district, and if not, being able to, it's not that we don't want the children, but if they're here, then we can actually charge their school district if they're not a resident, so...
It's not that we don't want the children.
No, it's not that we do not want the children.
We do, we do want the children, but, but somebody has to foot the bill.
Yes, I agree.
Somebody has to pay for this. We even have people from out of the country.
Correct.
With, with children here. I, I don't know what's in their, in their, what do you call, income tax, uh, IRS, or whatever, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? Parogi Joe?
Before Joe speaks, one clarification, our public budget meeting is Thursday at six, at six o'clock. Go ahead, Joe, the floor is yours.
Please, whoever's running this meeting, gavel be down, 'cause yous all know I can talk, uh, from the heart, and I can get carried away.
I can't ever gavel you down.
No, but I, what I'm saying is, Antonio brought up a good thing, I never knew this till I turned sixty-five, they went, Parogi Joe, 'cause I showed a driver's license, I saw a social security number, and the fellow in front of me said, uh, Wheezy, but he said, he called me Parogi Joe, 'cause everybody knows me, he said, Wheezy, this is what you get, Parogi Joe, this is what you get at now that you're turning sixty-five, and she was turning sixty-two, I said, now the Polack in me came out, and, and I said, I might be Polish, but you should do that, like Antonio referred to, you should do that for everybody, because he's right, there's people behind me, all my neighbors, they got up and walked out, because Miguel come up from my front porch after they said we're getting me a police escort out, I said, I don't need that, that are, they're all my neighbors in the, in the social security office, I don't need no police escort, that's Miguel, and that's Antonio, that's, I said, they're all my neighbors, all I can do is, I'll show you what I, what I, uh, I learned from, uh, Kathy Barbikis, she said, do this, I said, what's that? She said, mi amigo, bravo, you for being my friend, and I told Kathy the other morning, you're right, we need to be friends and family like God intends all to be, and my grandparents gave, I love my mother's maiden name, Gaudy Sky, Polish, my dad's name, Stadab, that's a Slovenian, now, he's referred to what happened to me, uh, in a way, I said, you, you mean politician, not you, not everyone use, 'cause you've got a heart, you wanna do the best for my little grandchildren, seven and ten, and Valley Elementary, and he's all wanna do the best, eleven hundred, uh, am I right?
Eleven thousand.
Seven thousand, I'm sorry, now, eleven thousand kids are out there, you wanna do the best to schools, the best to buses, the best, uh, prices, the best of everything, and I happen, I said this before, I happen to walk into your friend and my friend, Chris Voss, Attorney's Officer, and right by the combination of men's and boys' room, and ladies' room, a wall, picture, a frame, this big, I said, and yous know, I said he's the best in Lucerne County, but this is a little word out of Harrisburg, the best in all of Pennsylvania Attorney, uh, award, so, I was, you know, a Polish, I was right when I said Lucerne County, but I never knew it was for the whole, or coming from Harrisburg, the best in the whole state.
What a commercial.
Anyway, my point to all this is, it takes a politician like, uh, Trump, uh, I like, I like the word, but my point is, it takes them to change that, you only get what you put in, you don't get no more back, 'cause I said, uh, well, why don't I get any free money, free food, free, uh, housing, free life, and he said, you were born in Hazelton, Ross and Blue Comma Diet, he knew me, and he said, you only get what you paid in, you don't get nothing else, they can do that, all politicians could do that, not me what I, Joe, uh, please, uh-
Marie.
Don't say I might be Polish, that, that comment, personally, too, I might be Polish, I don't like that kind of comment, uh, many Polish people are my friends, I attend a Polish church, at the end of the day, in Shandown, the Polish people are very, very nice people, Shandown, uh- I agree, I agree, and my next four names, Kathy Barbikis and, and Elizabeth Voss, I don't remember all their names, but they are good people, not only, uh, people from Puerto Rico, Caribbean, uh, all, all the country, Mexico, are all my neighbors, and I like them all, I didn't know what's how to answer, like Kathy taught me, Kathy Barbikis, well, I give it, mi amigo, bravo, you, we can all do that to everybody, mi amigo, bravo, you, we, we have grandparents from somewhere. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
What a commercial, Chris, what a commercial.
All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.